Everyone, welcome to this evening's March 11th, 2020 School Committee Workshop focused around budget tonight.
So I'm figuring we can work till about eight o'clock and then take a where are we? Are we still focused and have we answered most of the information? So we'll kind of do a check in at eight. I also, you know, as we what I'm going to do is go through some information to of all the cost centers. Then probably give you some work time again of, you know, what questions might we have as we look through? And at eight, we can stop and I can go over the COVID-19 information. We're getting information every minute of the day. So we'll let you know, I've got to get some feedback from you on what you would like us to do and direction around school closing. So we'll get we'll work till eight if we finish before eight, great. I will, you know, we don't need to wait, but that will be kind of our target for stopping doing the coronavirus information. And then if we want to continue, we can continue. Feel free to get up and get snacks when you need it or drink. So there's a lot of information, but and then you're probably going to need some work time like you did last time, kind of looking through. Because I can talk at you, but then give you some time to talk. So one thing I'm starting with, thank you. Yep, this is the one. Is this is building budgets, which is not connected to a cost center. But I think it's important that when we meet with the principals, these are the budget numbers that we're going over with them. Even though their budgets fall into different cost centers. And so you'll see increases to the building budgets. And some of the increases this year is due to moving some things out of the Office of Learning and Teaching. So Shelley's office will cover things and then we shift things to the building, especially when it's building by building costs. But remember when we talked about Mobi Max, Mobi Max is a district license, so it went in for the OLT. So some of the increases, the building is shifting different codes, okay? So this this kind of gives you what each building budget totaled this year as they came in to talk about what their increases were, what their needs were, and that's what you you're seeing in your budget when you see a lot of details around what they've ordered for furniture, what they've ordered for instructional materials. That's what all of this is, okay? So you can see East Auburn, all the schools. It just gives you an overview of the billing budgets. I do not do an allocation. I don't say every it's per pupil and total your pupils and that's what you have to stay in. I really want it on a needs basis. And part of Adam and I are really the keepers of listening to each administrator. What is one administrator doing? Is the other administrator thinking the same way? Like the Lucy Cawkins discussion, every talking to each administrator, what have you done for books? Have you ordered enough books to support the program? That was a question. What are you doing with handwriting, making sure they're getting the materials they need? So if one administrator says, boy, I've gotten a really strong return on investment on this, we talk about it with all the administrators and loop back. So that's part of our job is really understanding what each of them sees as their high needs and then working with them on that. But that just gives you, in case you're wondering, well, what how much goes to each building for things? That's what this is. So we're jumping, we did cost center one, which was regular instruction. We did cost center two, special education, and then cost center four, Article Four, I didn't erase it there.
I'm just curious, what is cost center three?
Three is technical, career and technical, and we don't we don't have any expenditures nor do we receive the revenue.
Okay.
Okay, but thank you for that. So this is other instruction. These are the things that are in this cost center that you'll see. The athletic director position, athletic stipends, athletic trainer, co-curricular stipends. So what I did print for you is what is in the teacher's contract regarding stipends? And I'm just going to grab one too, Deanne. Whoops, sorry, thanks. We did increase stipends in this contract to because they had been really flat for, my gosh, a long time. Long time. So we did increase stipends in this contract, 10%. Yes, thanks, Adam. So these are the stipends that we account for, however, they're not in stone. So in cost center four, we meet with Todd Sampson, who is here tonight, if there are questions regarding the co-curricular. He's going to add volleyball, right? Remember you had the volleyball people come. So he's moved a cheering JV cheering coach, which they no longer need, and he's moving that to the volleyball. So there was an increase, it's reallocation. So a lot of the times, like if, for example, right now, we don't have a debate team because we don't have an instructor to do debate. If there's a teacher that wants to do something else, we assign that stipend to them. So we don't have every position that's listed here, but we account for them. And then we can reallocate them if they're not assigned. So the principals work together. So you can see what middle school has, what the high school has. And then the elementary have two stipends for extracurricular, and they usually use it for chorus and yearbook. And then they work with their PTOs often to do some other things. If a particular school like Sherwood Heights had running club, so they added that stipend on their own. We also have our team leader stipends in here. No, that's in the other class center. But you'll see in the in this, you'll see at the bottom of the third page is how they calculate team leader position. So if a teacher becomes team leader, department head, they get additional stipend. We also have technology stipends at each of our elementary schools to help run their webpages, do any tech trainings that staff might ask for. And it's the same stipend that we would give for other positions. And we do that at the elementary because the middle school has an EdTech three that helps with their technology, and the high school has an EdTech three. So this was a way to give a person at the elementary level some added responsibilities in a tech stipend.
Is there one of these people at each elementary school?
Yes, each elementary school identified someone.
Is that all they do or?
No, they teach. It's just like team leaders, team leaders teach and they do something else. So it's it gives them some added responsibility and they get paid for that. Also in this cost center is summer school, game security timers, scores, uniforms, project graduation, kickoff mentor program. So things that have to do with co-curricular. The increase in this cost center is $42,000. And most of that, so remember in that first tab, you're going to have to go to the first tab is all other information.
So it's under the under the one that says cost center one additions, changes. Ignore the part that says cost center one. We realized we didn't need a tab for changes for every cost center. So all the changes and additions are under that tab that says cost center one additions, changes.
So if you look at the headings, there are what are the changes in this cost center? So that you can refer to this later about, this is really where I would be right now, not digging into the details unless you want to. But you can even pull these out. But if you look, does everybody see where I'm talking? Brian, do you see it? Dave, Dave, can you help? Rose, Brian, you're helping Pam. Good, how about you, Deanne? Karen, you found it? Can you help Deanne find it? Yep, you've got it. Yep, you're there. Okay, so you're looking for the one that says changes and additions to cost center four, other instruction. So you can see where some of the increases came, event security. So Todd, make sure he's checking in with what what might be increases, what our needs have been. And then we look at increasing those categories. I have to step away. You want to go through that?
And just to just to give you a sense, what I tried to do is I tried to go through the entire budget and anything that was really a notable change to get it all on these sheets. So that you could have one handy place to find everything without digging. So I'm just going to go down and feel free to jump in if you have questions. But we reviewed every line, decided if anything needed to be adjusted up or down based on either new rates or or what things have looked like the last couple of years. So increase event security at EL. And then you're going to see through these next few lines, we had a request from the city rec department to essentially take on the middle school football program. And so we have put that in the budget. That's in there, the full cost right now. So you'll see football officials, 1420. And then EL athletic officials, we raised that up 4,000. AMS athletic supplies is up, and that part of the increase is for football, $295. And now we're going to get to some things that we've mentioned before that the gate receipts are now flowing through the general fund budget. And that was a requirement of the auditors, that we shift that so that they're no longer in the activity funds. And so the associated expenses that those that those are paying for are also now in the budget. So you're going to see some of that here. Athletic supplies at EL, $5,200. And we've got the AMS athletic equipment, which includes 679 for football. AMS dues and fees, 865 for football. And then EL co-curricular dues and fees, 5900, and co-curricular field trips, 4750. And those last two items were also previously gate receipts. Need help finding anything?
Cost center one additional info, is that what we?
Yeah, it's the tab that says cost center one additional.
That was a challenge.
Addition slash change, not not additional info, addition slash changes.
Now we're literally on the same page.
Right here.
Nice.
Here we are.
And now keep going to.
And they're in order by cost center, so go till you get to cost center four. So all those additions amount to $30,400 in increase in that cost center. Then we had a couple shifts, as I talked about before. When I find things that need to be coded differently to be more accurate, I make those changes. And so there were a couple of things I changed the coding that moved them into cost center one. So I wanted to highlight that. We allocated a certain amount of driver field trip salaries to all the schools. And we felt it was more accurate to allocate a piece of that to instructional field trips. We had all of it in co-curricular and extracurricular. So we moved 25% of that out. So that amounted to 24,109. That's just a shift. And then both EL and Franklin pay tuition for a welding program. That really should be in instruction. It had been in other. And so we moved that, that accounted for $33,000. So those two things shifted 57,000 out of other and into regular instruction.
So it's not like we've cut 57,000, we've just reallocated it to another cost.
Exactly.
Okay, so we still.
It's still in the budget. I just wanted to highlight because it affects how much it looks like the cost center is up or down.
Or later a better time to ask questions about like that, the welding tuition later?
I think it's really up to you how you want it to be.
I was just curious. I was just curious about how many positions are actually being filled or how many slots we're filling? And, you know, what that equates to.
Well, is that for EL only?
No, it's been to the actual color or not.
There are no fat and kids Franklin as well or?
There's a microphone, I think.
Yeah, so how Russ and I do it is we have 12 slots with the New England School of Welding. They do a little application interview process between New England School, Larry Gordon, who oversees that, and Russ. So they're getting viable candidates. So we have 12 slots. And if and it's, you know, it's divided six and six. But if he only has four viable and we have eight, then then we mix and match and swap those to make sure that we're using those 12 slots. Ideally, we'd like to be six and six. And sometimes as kids sometimes leave the area, he's had some students who've left, we've been able to add some programs. So we really try to keep that as full as we can with 12. And the idea, the theory is that we would each have six slots, but we mix and match. Like, what do you have, what do I have? Like I said, we we have a pretty good application process. We kind of fit them pretty well.
And just sorry, just one more time, this is split with who?
Franklin.
Franklin, okay.
And again, like some of his students may leave that program and not because that's the mutual decision that Russ makes or they've moved away. That's been another challenge is that when sometimes when kids move away, then we bring in the person on the waiting list.
So the the cost, is this a total cost of the 12 slots or the R portion of it? Or I'm just curious how much the actual dollar line is, if it's 67,000 or if it's just this 33,000? Like, is part of it already in another bucket?
No, it was all of it. So the the 33,000 is represents what was in here last year and moved. It may be slightly different in this year, and I'll get you that number later.
I was just curious, thank you. It was a question that I had.
Every year, Russ and I do the, have you got your six slots in and do you have your six slots in?
Okay, right, thank you. Cool, thank you.
What I really tried to do with these was account for the change. So that's why I made sure I put this stuff. And the other piece I wanted to to tell you for each cost center, and you'll see it at the bottom, what would it have cost to maintain the salary and benefits in that cost center? And so in this case, it would have been 56,000. And in this case, you'll see that's more than the actual entire increase in the cost center, and that's because of that shifting. So not to get too into the weeds, but that's that was how I approached that. Any other questions on cost center four? Bring it on. I guess I have to run the PowerPoint. On a Mac, oh, man.
I think I can do it. I'll ask Peter to come up if I can.
It may be a tech person or.
So next is cost center five. This is student and staff support, and here's Katie to tell you all about it. We just finished cost center four.
When we take our break, I can do it. All right. So cost center five. Did you do a good job in the last one?
I don't know. We'll find out, we'll get the reviews later.
Okay, that's funny. All right, so cost center five is student staff support. And so if you turn your page, so you can see what the changes were in that cost center. There's a longer list here a little bit. But this cost center covers the assistant superintendent position, curriculum director, two administrative assistants, the assistant principals, school secretaries, guidance counselors, librarians, educational technicians that serve in that role, our nurse LPN and health aides, and our technology staff. So a bulk of, the reason they go in this cost center is most of their job is around how to support students and staff to do their best in their job. The other items in here are the lease payment buyout for iPads and laptops and various other things you can see here. I don't need to read it, but you can see other things in this cost center. Now, looking at the district device, and Peter Robinson is here in case there are questions. So at your retreat, we went over this information with you. So we're going to review it because we have made a change in the lease payment information. So this gives you kind of a picture of what our district devices are. How many do we have? And you can see in pre-K six, we have one device to two students. So that's 1,200 iPads. So we don't have one to one at K six, we do one to two. We changed that because the cost, it was not cost effective to keep doing one to one and having to replace. You couldn't replace fast enough to keep the fleet for that many grade spans. Then we have Mac Air laptops for MLTI, that's in grades seven through 12. We have 500 teacher laptops. And we were able to cascade down when we replaced teacher laptops to give educational technicians laptops. So all educational technicians now have laptops as well. This also covers our Power School servers, our Pro Fund servers. So everything that's holding our information, that cost would go into this cost center. The lease payment buyout, so we are in the middle of lease payments for our pre-K six iPads and our pre-K six teacher laptops. So you can see that in next year's budget, it will be the third payment in the lease purchase. And then the following year, you'll do the final payment. Then with the MLT laptop buyout, so what's happening in the state, and you may be aware, I'm serving on the main, the MLTI, which is the main learning technology initiative. As I was asked to represent superintendents at the advisory, there are about 25 members to that, and we meet again Friday. And what they're doing is they're taking a year to relook at MLTI. So they're still committed to it, the funds will stay there. But how will those those dollars be used is what the discussion is really about. So part of that is all of our high school laptops is something we need to discuss and think about. So we met with Tara Maker, who is our Apple representative, and talked about what are the options? Because we have Apple devices at the high school and how can we continue to have those devices next year? So we have agreed to keep our, and you see them, 1,111 high school student laptops. They're selling them to us at $48 apiece. And part of that is you have to buy the license license for them and you have to do the damage insurance. So that's $107,049. That's about half the cost of what we've had in there for laptops. That's about half the cost of what we've had in there for laptops, for the high school. So, what we're doing is, we're gonna, we put in here a buyout. What we thought we might be able to do, which we have changed that thinking, we thought, once the decision has been made from the advisory, and accepted by the commissioner, and so forth, is, and we hope to hear that, we hope to be done with our work by October, November, that whatever the decision was, we would have funds in order to start executing whatever that decision is. Because that decision could be, we aren't supporting seventh and eighth grade anymore. So now, now what do we do about seventh and eighth grade? It might be, we're gonna do primary instead of, so, it could, it could be lots of different decisions, there's been nothing decided at this point. But instead, what we're gonna do is just do the buyout, so that we know we have laptops for high school students next year. And that's a hundred and seven thousand. So next year, when you're going through budget, and you know what the options are, you're probably going to have to raise that budget to, to do what you need to do. But we don't know, we don't have a crystal ball. So what's in here is for the buyout of the high school laptops. Which is a pretty good deal with forty-eight dollars each.
So if we spend a hundred and seven thousand to buy these out?
Yes.
Next year, we won't have to spend that money to buy, are we buying more, is that what you're saying?
Well, what, what we can do is sell them. So, if, we don't know yet what, we don't know yet what MLTI is gonna support. Right now, they pay for the seventh and eighth grade laptops. So if they don't pay for those laptops, and you still want laptops at the middle school, you're going to have to purchase those. That's, that's the big unknown. So I wish I, we knew more, because we, we don't know, there's a lot of discussion on equity, and, and, you know, Northern Maine doesn't have as much access as Southern Maine. So there's a lot of discussions on how this, these funds will be allocated. So you, so it's best to have the high school have laptops next year, and then you're gonna make a decision about what you're gonna do with those.
Excuse me, where are we at on the life of the laptops? How old are they?
Right. Peter, do you want to come and talk about life? He knew he was gonna be coming up. I warned him, I said, you will be called.
So, that actually is a great question. These are, right now, at the end of this year, they'll be four years old, and they've been in student hands for that entire four years. So, personally, my recommendation is that doing a fifth year is, is a risk, but it's one that I think we can, we can do. I mean, that's the reason that we wanted to do the damage insurance, to make sure that we can sustain a one-to-one for that fifth year. We don't have the sort of end-to-end warranty coverage that we've had as part of the MLTI program, that goes away when the contract ends on June thirtieth. So, yes, they're four-year-old devices, and for laptops, I mean, four years is, is getting up there, especially when they've been carried around by high school and middle school students for those four years. But I think this is the, the most cost-effective way to get us through the bridge year, and I think that was the state's intent with creating the bridge year, and saying, they're basically giving us the middle school student laptops and the teacher laptops at middle and high school. We only have to pay for the student laptops at the high school level, and the licensing for the management for those laptops. So it's a good deal. And they will still, the ones that are in good, reasonably good condition, will be worth more than we're spending on them at the end of next year.
The eleven dollars is strictly for damage, is what we're looking at, just for the.
So the.
Once licensing.
So, okay, so, we pay the forty-eight dollars for all of the student laptops at grades nine through twelve. So that's all of the high school, EL, Franklin, RETC, grades nine through twelve. We pay the eleven dollars, which is a mobile device management license, for those same high school-level laptops. And we pay the, the damage insurance for all of the student laptops, middle and high school, because that's, that's a choice that we're making. To do that, to cover that, to kind of cover our investment, so that we don't end up with nothing at the end of next year.
So.
So, so let me add some stuff too. Peter and I have talked a lot about looking at all the different kinds of devices. Whether it's Chromebooks, whether it's different Apple products. So, he's working on doing, and he's been talking to Brian about this, how do we start to look at what is the best solution? And you have time now, which is great, you have some time to really look at it. Also with Apple, I mean, we're already getting companies that know we're gonna be buying out, saying, next year, when you don't want them, we'll take them. So we, we expect revenue to come in, to help support whatever solution we go to next. So, this is a bridge year, and we are getting a really excellent deal to help support. And then, the best part is, we can make revenue back. I mean, Tara feels like, this hundred and seven investment, you'll get back when you go to sell the devices, if you choose.
And that's, that's based off forecasts from a, a number of different recycling, you know, repurchasing companies. That's not just Apple saying that, it's, you know, I actually have quotes from several different companies, saying that their value will be more than the hundred and seven that we're spending.
Well, I guess I was thinking of the insurance part of it, and, and with high school students, or any students in that, in that matter, with the damage to them. But I'm thinking of, as they, as they fade out, you know, loss of the process, or loss of the, the screens, that insurance doesn't really have anything to do with that. It's just, if somebody drops and breaks it.
It, it will cover logic board failures, screen fail, it'll cover equipment failure. What it doesn't cover is loss and theft. And certainly, it's, it will not cover repairs beyond, I think we said four hundred and fifty dollars was the max, which I think is high for a four-year-old laptop. But, I mean, any repair that we do now, you know, broken screen, a logic board would be less than that. So, any of the normal things that typically are going wrong with these laptops now would be covered by this insurance.
Being four years old, are these all solid-state?
Yes, absolutely. No more spinning drives, ever.
Thank you.
Now, I guess I just have something, a question or a point, was that Lewiston, when the MLTI decided to go with Chromebooks? So I'd be curious about looking, kind of going forward, what the difference would be, benefits, drawbacks, that sort of thing. So because, obviously, they are significantly less in money, but, on the same rate, they don't last as long, so.
Right.
Exactly.
That's, that's a huge discussion. I mean, are they, you know, are they, are they really less, you know, by the time you spend on one that's a little bit rugged, that will survive being in student hands? You know, those kinds of things, there's also some licensing costs. I mean, that's really what we need to look at next year. That's why, having this bridge year is an opportunity to really look at the options. We haven't had, really had that option since the beginning of MLTI. We've always gone from one contract to the next within the same year. And typically, what would happen is, we'd hear from the state, you know, around this time of year, saying, okay, sign up for next year. And there really wasn't time to kind of decide. We also need to figure out what the state's doing, if they're doing something at the middle school, what do we do at the high school that will best fit in with that, to allow students to continue on? So there's a lot of questions, and I, and I think this will be a, a big piece of our work next year, on our technology subcommittee, with input from as many stakeholders as we can get to come talk to us.
Absolutely, I know that there's some folks in the public that just kind of want this brought up, and that, you know, rest assured, we are looking into it, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, one of the things we're, like, like Peter said, that's one of the things we gotta focus on. The other thing we gotta focus on is, what do people, what are teachers using? Because that also sets us up for the type of device that we need, you know? And, and maybe it's a subset needs one type of device, and some need a different device. But, then we have to look at how much maintenance, and how much time and effort and licensing and all that kind of stuff. So, absolutely, that's all in the, in the plan. That's why, like Peter said, that's why this, this bridge year is pretty crucial. Peter, I think you said, it was, I mean, we're buying them at forty-eight, we're gonna sell them for, what, double, roughly?
Estimates of their value are anywhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred dollars a device, so it will easily cover not just the forty-eight, but the, the insurance and the MDM costs as well.
Yep. And I just wanted people to know that, that we really are, this is really a, a pretty solid investment.
I also just want to say, from my own personal, I have a ten-year-old MacBook Pro, and I can still run Photoshop and Illustrator, like, heavily, so.
Oh yeah.
So an older Mac device isn't necessarily a death sentence for them.
Absolutely not. We have, we have a lot of older Macs in our elementary schools, that have cascaded down over the years. Where that becomes difficult is when you're trying to maintain a one-to-one, and they do, as, as Brian said, they sort of start to fade away, and they sort of die on the vine. And then you're struggling to make sure that every student has one, because of course, if you're one-to-one, and, and students don't have them, then it's very challenging.
What was it, what, what would be the cost to replace all of them for the seventh and eighth graders, if you were to buy them like today?
Well, it depends what you buy.
Equal to what, yeah, I guess.
So if you're looking at, if you're looking at Mac laptops, which is what we have now, they are about nine hundred dollars apiece. But I think, I, I, I will say on the record that I think that Apple has put their laptops out of reach for the educational market, by not having something less expensive than that. I mean, I think you have to look at less expensive solutions these days.
Some more to come on that.
Thank you for your honesty.
Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah. So, when you look at the lists of things that have moved around in your booklet, you'll see that Adam really worked hard to look at, what is the history been? And making those adjustments based on the history of usage. So you can see, we had some things go down, which is in the brackets. So if you see anything in the bracket, that's a decrease. So, we used to contract with Advocates for Children to do some of our Good Touch, Bad Touch, Health lessons, and our guidance counselors are doing that work. We have added a benefit, a health benefit, to our health assistants, they did not have it, and we are aligning them to our ed techs. We have a cultural broker service, we contract for a cultural broker, and that helps our ELL families.
What are health assistants?
So health assist, so we have three nurses in the district, and then we have LPNs, and then we have health assistants. They don't necessarily need a two-year degree in, in health. They help to really just check in on students, give Band-Aids, give ICE. But they're not to, you know, diagnose, they're really there to support, give out medications, and they're under the supervision of the nurses. So if they have something come through, they say, I need to call the nurse. And that's at our elementary level. We have a couple elementary that are LPNs, and then I think it's Walton and East Auburn that are health assistants. Am I correct? Yes. And then we, yes, and then we have a nurse at Fairview, a nurse at Sherwood Heights, and a nurse at the high school. And then LPN at the middle school, Park Avenue, Washburn. And, and then the others are health assistants. So the cultural broker, just looking at the cost, we made adjustments to that. We have the training for the math program, if we end up going with a new math program, there's days and time for the, the training on that. Then you have our, the tuition reimbursement, we've had to increase there, we have kids, not kids, teachers taking classes. Then we made some adjustments to summer printing stipend, looking at what Larry has charged for work that he does in the summer. Then the other parts are things that do with library, the librarians. Then if you turn the page, you get into some of our online things, like discovery, education was adjusted due to use. Then land, our landline phone support with Wi-Fi. So things you're seeing here are swipe cards, then you'll see the MLTI device. So we had a reduction of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, because we did not put in money to help with whatever solution comes out mid-year. Okay? Then we had a network upgrade, a reduction in park, projectors. So each year, the principals look at what they have for needs for projectors, to make sure there are ongoing replacements. And then we have firewall upgrade, and you can see that we pay our portion of E-rate. E-rate are federal funds that go towards needs in the tech, technology area. And so we have to pay a portion of that to, to help with our E-rate, use of E-rate. Then you'll see Power School software, and then you'll see other things that we do, like Class Link software and Kimono. So those are things that help support the work we do with technology as well. Do you want to add, Adam?
I was just gonna point out on the Power School. That, the twenty-two thousand, that's the cost of Power School, and we're able to remove that from our budget this year, because the DOE is funding that directly for districts who are members of regional service centers, which we are, with three other districts. So that's a direct savings to us as a result of being in the service center.
I just wrote that down, thank you. What does that mean, that we're part of the regional service center? How does that benefit us?
So, we voted, the school committee voted, and then the public voted, must have been two, almost two years ago now, to form a regional service center with Lewiston, RSU sixteen, and SAD fifty-two. And it's basically an opportunity for the districts to collaborate with each other, in, in whatever way they see fit. And, by doing so, not only this benefit, but we receive additional state subsidy. And for next year, as well as the current year, we're receiving two hundred thousand dollars of additional subsidy for being a member of the service center. And some of the things that we've worked together on include bidding for milk for the nutrition program. And we've talked with Lewiston a lot, to really see what else we can bid together going forward. And, you know, when you combine Lewiston and Auburn, you've got a lot of buying power. So, we're taking a look at that. And, you know, what services we can share, there's been a lot of conversation. We've worked on having one contract for Frontline, one contract for Scott Parker Safety Consulting. And, but there's really no limit to what we can do, and try to be creative with it, and it's certainly something that we're interested in continuing to pursue.
HVAC contracts, that sort of stuff? Like maintenance?
It could potentially be anything. One of the things we talked about, may not be able to happen next year, but doing a joint capital improvement assessment. That would be a big, a big project. And by bidding it together, we might be able to realize some savings. But, based on what we put in the budget, we may not be able to do it this year, but it's something we're gonna continue to talk about.
Thank you.
Hey, Katie?
Yes.
Adam, or Peter? Have we had, and I know I'm to raise your density yet, Brian. Have we had talks with the city about things that are kind of in common? You know, when you, when you look down through here, you think of like, landline, phone support, networks, wireless, you know, probably a laundry list of things that I'm sure the city has in their budget as well. And, you know, in order to, whether it's cost savings, whatever it might be, to try to facilitate, you know, having them in the same budget, separated, whatever that means. But have we had conversations about that kind of stuff?
Yes, yes. Peter has met regularly with his, with Paul Frazier. And there's pros and cons. We're, we're Mac-based, they're PC-based, although we have PCs as well. But you want to talk about some of the things you have talked about?
Yeah, I mean, we, we do share our wide-area networks. The, the city actually owns the sort of the, the infrastructure that connects all of our buildings together, so we, we collaborate on that. We have, our networks are very much interlinked, which is why, when we had problems two weeks ago, we both had problems. So we do, we do collaborate on as many things as we can. The needs, though, are very, very different. I mean, in, in a, you know, a school setting, you've got hundreds, thousands of people kind of coming and going, versus, you know, a city facility where you've got employees. So, and it's also a lot more people. So really, in terms of maintaining our network infrastructure in our buildings, we need to be able to deal with that in a different way, because we're dealing with a student population rather than an employee population. But wherever we can, we do collaborate.
Peter, on that topic, could you just talk about the network upgrade that we just referred to? And what will that do for us?
So the network upgrade, that, as Katie said, that's an E-rate project. It's what's called Tier Two E-rate, which is something that the federal government's been doing now, I think this will be year five, maybe six, I'm not quite sure. But basically, they reimburse us, or they pay for eighty percent of the project, so, you know, for every dollar, we spend twenty cents. And this is something that we, we looked at our networks, and we looked at our core, the switches, the core pieces that sort of connect all of our buildings and networks together. And they were getting pretty old, and we had some, some gear that was well over ten years old. And we said, you know, really prudent suggests that we should upgrade those and replace them before they fail. So we looked at doing that as a, as a more integrated whole, I mean, they'd grown, you know, we started with one switch, and we added, and we said, okay, how, can we look at this in total, rather than just adding pieces on as things grow? And that was that, what that project is really about. It's basically replacing all of those core switches, so that our buildings are interconnected with new equipment, and making sure that between our connections with the city, we have a better capability to troubleshoot in the event that we do have problems that we had, you know, the week before last.
Sort of go back to what Brian said, in.
Sort of go back to what Brian said in regards to, because there was some discussion as we were doing our tour the other night about the uses of facilities and city versus school facilities. And I guess my question would come back to, I own both a Mac and a, and a Microsoft, whatever you want to call it. How hard is it to get those systems to work with each other? I know that they design programs so that they can do it.
We do, we do. I mean, we run, our Profund Business Office software is, is PC software. There is no Mac client for Profund, and all of our administrators are able to use remote desktop client to basically run a Windows desktop on their Macs so that they can interact with the business office. And, and I mean, that's, that, it, it's much less of a challenge than it was when I started in technology. Back then, you really couldn't get Macs and PCs to talk very well together. Now, you can take, you know, flash drives and move them in between. You can interconnect them on the network. They can talk to each other pretty effectively.
Not, not as hard as it used to be.
Not at all, no.
Well, more and more, they're getting, they're training for both. You know, I think a lot of times you were an Apple technician or you're a PC technician, and so trying to cross, you know, when we were having that issue a couple of weeks ago, our team was working with their team, and it took all the teams to be trying to find the problem. So that, we're always calling and troubleshooting for them, they help troubleshoot for us. So it, it is a collaborative effort. They would say they don't have enough people, and we would say we don't have enough people. So that's what usually happens is when, then, when there's been talk about, well, can we reduce in the tech? They're like, how would you ever do that when we barely are, are, you know, meeting our demands right now?
When you look at the ratio of technicians to devices, we, we have two technicians and over four thousand devices. So it's, it's, I think that's a pretty, a pretty spare ratio.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So the summary for this cost center, this cost center's up thirty-nine thousand dollars. No, I was going to do that again. Yeah. Again, on purpose. Yeah.
You got thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Oh, sorry.
It's in, it's, yeah, on your, it's in the PowerPoint. So cost center six is system administration, and what's covered under that is the superintendent, business manager, three administrative assistants, business office manager, payroll benefits clerk, accounts payable receivables clerk. The other central office positions are in other cost centers, which you've already heard. It also includes legal fees, school committee costs, our frontline school messenger, ADS account, accounting software, different memberships for the team, the auditor, tuition reimbursement is also here, and postage. So when you look through that cost center, those are the items that you're going to see. This cost center is up fifteen thousand, and it's mostly around salary and benefits. Those are, are the major drivers in, in this cost center.
Tuition reimbursement for what? I thought that was...
That, that'll, you'll see in different cost centers depending on, on who it's for.
Just related to that, how is that allocated? Like, if there's twenty teachers that show up and they're like, I'm taking the classes, is it preapproval? Is it at your discretion?
It's all preapproval and never denied.
Okay.
Usually. You know, I, I've...
So at least every teacher that's wanted to take a class has at least gotten to take one class?
Oh, they, they can take up by contract, three, three classes a year.
Okay.
They do have to have preapproval, and then they have to turn in their grade to get paid, the same, same type of process. If a, a teacher, I had an edu, a secretary, a teacher, you know, reach out to me, I'm in a master's program, I need to take more credits than that, would you allow it? And I do. So I don't want to keep them from getting their degree. So usually, we work together to make sure that they're having that.
And you'll see, we're going to blow through the tuition budget this year, which is why we needed to increase it. But as Katie said, they're entitled to the certain number of credits.
Okay. Now, is that benefit available to ed techs?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
We have had years where we had, where we, where we keep a, a list, and if the, if we can't sustain the budget, we talk about whether that can be moved to the new year. Although with the auditor, making sure everything is in one year, Adam would say, no, everything has to be done June thirtieth. But we have done that in the past. If we're in trouble financially around doing reimbursements, we work with folks. But everybody's very good about following the process. School administration, this is all of our principals, their secretaries in their buildings. This is, so you can see that list? And also, anything tied to the principal. So if there was postage, there's dues and fees there. They're part of different organizations, so you would see anything that they are part of, that would be under dues and fees, staff recognition, anything that is specific to the principal's use, that would come into this cost center.
Is the half a principal at East Auburn?
Yes, that's Sue Doris.
Yep.
Yeah. She's half-time at the district level, doing Title I and a variety of things. She wears many, many hats, including being a principal. So she tries her best to be in central office Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then she's in her building Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. But obviously, there's flexibility. If she needs to be in her building, or there's a parent meeting or an event, she's going to be in her building. That's her first priority. Yep?
I, how can you be half a person?
Right. No. So school administration is up ninety-five thousand, one ninety-three, and that's mostly, and we wrote that down for you. But you can see where there's some different things in the system that got shifted and changed. And I talked, I didn't talk about system with the nutrition, and that went in a system, but I'll go back to it. So in costs, in the system administration, so I'll back up a little bit. We did, you'll see on your paper where we have cost center six and seven. We put ten thousand dollars in to cover debt for students who leave us. And so we had not had a strict line item for that, more or less. We knew when students left, and so we, we absorbed that debt. This is a line now that will be charged, so the, the nutrition will charge us for the debt. So if a student family leaves with three hundred dollar debt, the nutrition will let us know that, and then we pay that debt off using the general fund. If students stay with us with the debt, that rolls. So that stays in the nutrition lines. Finance, the finance committee looks at debt regularly for the food nutrition to know where we are. And we know, we did, we have checked in with Chris Piercy, who's our new nutrition director, and we haven't seen a spike in debt because of the new law for food shame, shaming. We're, we haven't seen an increase. We're staying steady on what we usually have for debt, and, but we feel it's important to have ten thousand dollars there. I know we were asked, one of the questions was, what would it take to pay for all students to eat breakfast, to eat lunch free? And it was two hundred and fifty, am I right?
Hundred thousand dollars is the estimate.
Right.
So it's basically picking up Fairview, East Auburn, the middle school, and the high school.
So you would have to add two hundred thousand dollars to the budget to do that. We talked a little bit about that, the finance, I think it was finance, and, you know, ethically, you have to think about that, you know, would families who could pay, you know, the reason they don't qualify for universal is because of their free and reduced percentage, so you would have to think about that. We did not put that in the budget due to, to other priorities. But that's something you could consider. It's, it would be a two hundred thousand dollar addition.
The percentage of debt that you find, at what level is that? Elementary, middle, high?
I mean, ten thousand, ten thou, oh.
In general.
In general, where is most of the debt?
Elementary.
Elementary? Is there any way to, I mean, I'm sure this happens all the time, but to look for more grant opportunities, like the Title I? Or maybe even for us to consider adding just elementary into the budget for covering lunches?
Yeah, actually, Chris broke it out, and to do just the two elementary would be about a hundred thousand. It's about half of that would be to pick up the two elementary. Basically, it was just, think of the cost of all the paid meals that we sell for the whole year for all four schools, and that came out to about two hundred thousand.
Taxpayers have a hard time saying no to feeding kids, so it's definitely something we should kind of...
Well, we feed kids.
No, I do say, no, no, I mean, like, to fund it, to pay for it, for, you know, getting additional money. Like, it's some of these things, it's, it's hard to, for some people to be like, ah, should we pay for that? But I'm, yeah.
No, right. And, and we do get subsidy for certain lunch, you know, with our counts. So yes, you would have to think about if, if you would do that or not. What we did talk about is there are families who had, you know, knowing your families well and, and working with families to say, you know, can you pay, get on a payment plan? Can you fill out paperwork? Can we work with you? And then maybe coming up with some scholarship opportunities that if you know a family is meeting, you know, just over the cusp of not qualifying, is that a family we target to help and support? Rather than it's a family we do know probably could pay, and we need to find out more, what's the barrier? What's, you know, is it difficulty paying online? You know, what, what exactly is it?
My bill's paid.
I didn't mean to look at you, Karen.
Bucks every week.
I wouldn't shame you, I wouldn't shame you, Karen. I have the list if you'd like. No, I'm just, I'm, no, kidding. But the, the principals work hard with families of, at East Auburn and Fairview to, to understand what, what's the barrier with, with paying the bills. And we help support them as best we can. And, and people have been donating, you know, donating checks to help offset bills. So we've worked with families with that, too. It is, it's a challenge, there's no doubt about it. But everyone gets fed every day.
That's not how I meant it.
I know you didn't. I know. I know you didn't.
And just to point out sort of...
You know, people hear things, and then suddenly it becomes real.
Some of the vagaries of, of the coding, right? So this is in system administration.
Right.
And I called the DOE, and I said, where, where should that be coded? Does it really have to go in system administration? Because people think, you know, that's the superintendent's office. Yep. So that's just to point out, there's a lot of different things we have to put in these cost centers that you wouldn't necessarily think of off the top of your head. I also wanted to point out on this list, we had mentioned that we're getting a facility scheduling software, which we're really excited about. It's going to make it a lot easier for, both for the public as well as for our office to track things. And so we're going to be starting the setup for that very soon. So you'll see fifty, five hundred dollars for that in the budget.
That'll make it easier for people to apply for building use, too, rather than doing the paper. The paper gets sent in, the paper gets, so this is going electronic. Plus, we can print reports, how much was the building used?
In the high school, we'll also be using the same software for their athletic scheduling, so it'll, it'll integrate really nicely.
So school administration, you'll see that. And then cost center eight, and Billy Hunter is here as we go into the next two cost centers if there are specific questions regarding these. And so transportation and buses, this supports our transportation director, twenty-four bus drivers, four van drivers, and six bus aides. This is giving you a look at our fleet. So keeping up with our fleet is really important. So you'll notice in our report out on this cost center is, we, last year had three propane buses. This year, we have two gas buses in there. So we have to watch the market and what's going on with gas costs, propane costs, but making sure we have those different options. We also get reimbursed for school buses. So going down a bus in our budget means we'll go down in subsidy next year because of the buses. So it's kind of like a double-edged sword. You don't put them in, you also don't get the reimbursement. So right now, there are two buses in this cost center.
And we were approved for two, and that's what's in there.
Right.
This is probably not necessarily a budget discussion, but where are we at with electrical buses?
Well, believe me, Billy sent...
And we can use our cost savings from the green energy.
That's right.
There's a lot of stuff going on with that.
So, so Billy's like, do we want to be the first out there? Probably not. So he sent us an article the minute it came out. He's very up on what's the latest technology. So he sent us articles about it. We know, I think of one school department, Billy, in the state? One school department right now in the state? Two. Two school departments in the state ha, are looking at purchasing an electrical bus, so we'll wait and see how it goes.
What districts?
Which districts, Billy? Why don't you come join me?
Sure.
Well, I think, I remember Mount Desert Island's getting one through the Volkswagen grant.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So do you want to talk about what you know about electrical?
Electric is coming, but an electric bus right now costs about three hundred thousand dollars.
Versus...
Or more.
Versus ninety to a hundred. So they're coming. I, I believe they're coming fast. There's a lot of articles every month coming out, progressive, a lot of trucks are into them, naturally, a lot of cars are into them. The state gave one to, on a pilot program to Portland and one to Mount Desert Island. We're still offering that. We would love to have one or two, or how many you want to give us. So we're just waiting to hear as fast as they can come. Will we, the program allow, we'll take it.
Tesla needs to make one.
I'd love to have one.
No, it won't be three hundred thousand. I'll have like that.
That'll be interesting. You'll also notice in the list for this cost center, we have added a full-time mechanic. So this is an additional position in this cost center to not only help with our vehicle repair, but house repairs. This is adding to the staffing down at Support Services to, and what you can see is there's cost savings when you add a staff member because you're not contracting out, which can be more expensive. So you'll see in your list fifty-nine thousand dollars, but you also see a reduction in the need to, you know, contract out. So there is, sixty-five thousand was in there for contract. If we put a position, it's fifty-nine, nine forty-three. You'll also see, we do have an increase in vehicle premiums at five percent. You'll see an increase in gas, of course, for the gas buses, but you'll see a reduction in propane costs. So that's, that's where we kind of look at, you're going to have a decrease in one area, but an increase in another area. And then looking at engine parts, you know, as we look at more repairs, we're also going to need more parts. And then you see the buses there as well. And then we also have put in a seven-passenger van. So some, some of our vans have been purchased with special education funds, and when you buy, when you purchase a van with special education funds, you have to use it with special education students and programming. So this is a van that would be used for our aspirations work when we have students doing internships or job shadowing and need to get places, or we're going to do a visit, but it's not with, you know, a lot of kids. It might be ten students interested in going to visit something. This gives a lot more flexibility at the high school where the van that's at the high school is for special ed programming. This would give them another option for student transportation. Special ed students can use this van as well, obviously, but the other van is, is restricted for its use. So when we were talking to Billy about how much is his vans being used, and they're on the road all the time, Michelle can speak to that, our homeless students having a transport, our special education students having transport, having, so they're on the move all the time. So this, we believe, is a need, especially at the high school level with students doing more outside of school.
Do we have no other way to transport them right now other than a bus? A yellow bus?
They can put in for a van request, and it depends what's available, basically.
Yeah, and we've been budgeting money every year for these aspirations trips, and we felt it made more sense to hopefully buy a van that could be used not only for that, but homeless transportation, special ed transportation, or whatever else this district needed. So that's a request that we've put in.
It, it will pay for itself.
I just have a couple of other questions.
Sure.
The fifty-nine thousand, well, it's almost sixty thousand, for the mechanic, does that include insurance benefits?
Yes, that's the full cost.
That's the whole package?
Of the position, yeah.
Yeah.
And that was a budget, looking at all the lines in this cost center, that was a budget-neutral addition. We hope and believe it'll eventually be a savings, but this year, I budgeted it as a budget-neutral.
And what, because we have diesel buses as well, is this going to be a mandated, like, diesel mechanic position?
Most of our, most of our vehicles are, are gas or propane.
Okay.
We're down to, I think, seven diesels, and one is just used primarily. The others are just spare buses. They'll be, as you trade them in, those'll be, those'll be the ones that'll be leaving The others are just spare buses that'll be, as you trade them in, those will be, those will be the ones that'll be leaving us.
I just know diesels are really expensive to fix, so if we're gonna have a mechanic, we might as well.
Propane's really the challenge.
Cool.
So what what we're finding is when we send our bus for repair, the challenge of turnaround, you know, we can wait a month for a bus to return and, um, because of their demand on a mechanic. So if we have our own mechanic, we can get our buses turned around much faster on the road, which helps, obviously.
Um, we also, uh, the share center had their box truck that was recently purchased. Um, will, the school department will be responsible for servicing that as well, or it as part of this, or not?
It's not, if, yes, it's going on our schedule and Billy's crew's gonna work on it, but the share center program's gonna absorb any costs that are associated with it. It's not in our budget.
They'll be charged, right.
Okay.
Yep. And that includes insurance costs too.
Do we work on our propane buses or we do not?
We do. Um, the issue is when you get to the propane fuel system, um, that has to go to O'Connell's. Nobody will work on it around here. So that that's our problem with propane.
And we're we're shifting more to propane, you're saying?
We we have, we we put in a lot of dedication to the pro- uh, propane program, uh, but that's also why we're going to a few gas buses. They, the, uh, fuel emissions on gas are just a little bit more than propane, better than diesel. But the gas buses are are much easier to get fixed, especially in-house or in town. Uh, you don't have to send them to O'Connell's just because of the fuel system.
Could we possibly cross train them for propane?
Yes, we're 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 working on training programs for our-
Forget the diesel. Go with the propane guy.
Yeah, the diesels are, the diesels are phasing out, so that won't be an issue after a few more years. But the, that's, that's the reason that we've budgeted for gas buses for next year is the turnaround time and and the downtime. You know, propane's great, but if it's sitting in a yard somewhere for a month, it's not great at all. So, uh, that's just something we need, feel we need to do at this point. But we're gonna continue to monitor and assess that every year and see what makes sense to add to the fleet at that point.
It's it's always smart to have, not have all your eggs in one basket. So this is a way to have different options. And when the like, like you said, the electric comes out, that'll be another option, so. So, uh, you'll see this cost center is up eighteen thousand, six sixty-five overall. The next one is fa- uh, facilities maintenance. And this covers the director, Billy, um, foreman, for utility workers, uh, halftime secretary, building custodians, so you can see where the building custodi- custodians are. And we also continue with contracted services as well. So we always, when, um, we're always reviewing our contractor, uh, services. Billy does, um, uh, check in on that with building principals to say, how is our contracted services working out? If it's working out, great. If it isn't, we start to think, is it better to, um, hire a position or change contracted services? So we're always looking at how to best service our facilities. So if it's not working, we need to address it and we have to make decisions. So there isn't a one size fits all here either. It's gotta have a variety because there's different, um, ways to solve a problem. And so that's what we do there. You'll see in the list of items under cost, um, nine, a lot of really adjustments based on current usage, uh, what we have been seeing, so you'll see their accounts down, their accounts up. So you'll see if we replace contracted services with a position, so you'll see there, we did that with Park Avenue. But then you see a decrease in contracted services. So wherever we're doing some adjustments, you'll see lines going up and down. Other things in this cost center are safety and quis- equipment, our pine tree waste management, uh, uniforms for our staff, repair and maintenance, supplies, energy. You'll see all the electrical costs, the propane costs, water and sewage, uh, telephone overtime and our liability insurance. You'll see there, you also see debt service for minor cap- capital improvements. And then as you read through our list, you can see, uh, all the changes, and there are a lot. Um, but you'll see where we adjusted on supplies, items, and this is all based on what our use has been. These are also can be volatile accounts, you know, uh, we may, we may save here and then we have costs. Like right now with the coronavirus, you know, talking to Billy, we need to order things, we need to get things that wasn't expected. So we're working hard to to make sure that every school has the supplies they need to keep, um, facilities clean as possible right now. So we're working hard on that. So that's why you see ups and downs, um, you'll see ten percent increase on natural gas.
You only have one, um, custodian at AMS, one day a week? Is that what that means?
One daytime custodian.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So when you see day, it's they work during the day and night, they're the night custodian. They also care for eighteen sites. They do all the carpentry work within buildings, which includes some major renovations. So staff puts in, uh, requests through school dude. There, they meet every morning, what's the high priorities, send out the staff. The foreman does a lot of that work about where they're assigning, where's, uh, the strength of the skill set of of those employed. Maintenance worker also does deliveries. So all of our schools' deliveries, uh, maintenance person is assigned to that as they go around do mail, uh, from building to building to make sure, uh, communications are getting out. They do groundwork, which is snow plowing, the snow removal. You know, we've talked to the city about that and they would say they, it's the same thing, is they have a lot to cover. Uh, but when Billy will help out, I, there's been days when I've been nervous about a snowstorm, as Karen knows I have my issues. Uh, Billy would say, Katie, well, she just knows. Um, that's, you know, the chair knows things, yeah. Um, and so Billy will say to me, Katie, I'm gonna go help the city in certain areas that we know may be tricky for buses. So we, we work as a team with the city, we know they have a lot of mileage to cover. So if we can help, we try to help, and if they can help with snow removal. Uh, we've had big storms where we've asked them, can they bring in their equipment and clear us out? And they do that. They very much a partner in, especially snow day stuff is making sure it's safe for all of us to, uh, come in. Then you'll see all the vehicle and equipment that we have that needs to be taken care of. This, um, is up a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, four twenty-five. And you can tell, you you can see all that in the descriptions that we put together that Adam worked really hard to do.
Katie, can you talk about the security camera upgrades?
Right.
There's twenty-five, where where are those going in?
Yeah, wanna talk about that?
Oh, I can talk about that in a couple aspects. One, that that increase is something that was mistakenly left out of the budget. That was a human error. That should have been in this year's budget. It previously came out of CIP and I neglected to put it in the general fund this year. So that's what that increase is, is me putting it in. Um, so I apologize for that. But, um, every, every year, we review all the cameras with our, with the crew from Norris. And we, uh, upgrade a certain number, replace a certain number of cameras every year so that they don't become obsolete and start dying. Uh, we try to stay on top of that. And we have a lot of cameras in the district. Do you have any?
Over three hundred.
Over three hundred cameras throughout the district. So every year we're replacing and upgrading.
And they're outside and inside?
And I just, I've mentioned this before, just to point out again, that next to last line, uh, with the debt service, that includes the money for the two revolving renovation fund projects, uh, the forty-six thousand. So that'll be in there every year for the next ten years, but it won't increase, it'll be that amount.
It'll be the sixty-two or the forty-six?
Uh, it'll be the forty-six. The forty-six is a portion of the sixty-two increase.
Um, the next cost center is your debt service and local only debt summary. And so, thank you, Billy. Um, this is where we carry major capital improvement project bond and the Park Avenue School Building Project. We also receive subsidy, uh, for the Park Avenue Building Project, cause that was a state project. This is down because of the change in the interest, um, cost. So the Park Avenue is coming down slowly.
Yeah, it works the same way that you'll see the high school work, which is the payments decrease every year for, over the twenty-year life.
And so you can see where that was, that the debt, uh, principal of the project, Park Avenue, is down thirty thousand and its interest is, almost matches that at twenty-nine thousand. So that's why there's a decrease in this cost center. The next one is cost center eleven, which is all other expenditures, and this is the crossing guards. We have seven crossing guards and this is their cost. Adult education, and did Bill Grant make it yet?
He did.
Oh, Bill, you're so good. Uh, Bill Grant is the director of both Auburn and Lewiston Adult Ud programs. And he was at the Lewiston budget, uh, and he's still standing and he made it. So you, so you made it through, good. Uh, so he is here. Brian, I did mention to him that you might have some questions, so he he's willing to come up and discuss more about programming. We, uh, this was one of those collaborations with Lewiston. Uh, Bill Grant had approached me and said, you know, uh, the Lewiston director is leaving, what do you think about? Uh, we, he was our director. What do you, what do you, uh, think about sharing me? Uh, you know, this would be a great opportunity to bring the two programs together. We share a lot of the same students. And so, uh, Bill Webster and I, uh, agreed to that. We came to the school committee and it was supported. So we support thirty-five percent of his salary and benefits. This also supports an ABE, which is Basic Education Coordinator, who also is, teaches literacy. So her, her, her office is here on the fourth floor. She works with folks to get them ready to take an adult ed class. So it's really getting up their basic English, basic math skills, so that they can access and be successful in adult ed. Uh, we have an academic career advisor and an administrative assistant. It also covers eight to twelve academic teachers, so depending on the needs of students coming in, uh, Bill works with his staff on what courses will be offered and what are the needs for staffing. We also budget for three workforce instructors. This is if we were offering a CNA program, something that we're being asked by the community of needs. There's budget there to pay a stipend for for, uh, instructor to come in and do that. We also, of course, earn revenue. A lot of the adult ed is revenue driven, so some things can't go if the revenue's not coming in. So he plays a lot of the, okay, do I have revenue to do this? I can do that. If not, I can't. So this is expenditures, but a lot of his revenue needs to uphold the expenditures. Uh, it off, uh, also covers approximately fifteen to twenty enrichment classes that are offered. And so it's really up fourteen thousand, eight oh, uh, eight zero six because of staff salary and benefit increases. Brian, do you want to come up and?
I just had good, you know, I would finance me-
Yeah, Bill, do you want to come on up? Have them meet you too, some people may not have met you.
Well, if you were watching TV, you would've seen me over in Lewiston.
Uh, one of the questions I asked in the finances, uh, what's driving the 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 classes? Uh, having, my wife and I both have been in the classes and and especially since I've retired. Uh, and sort of what drives it and where we make our decisions on it? I understand that, you know, if you're gonna run a class, it's gotta have a body in it to make it worthwhile and actually I've seen, I've seen more over in Lewiston, I've seemed to be getting more from Lewiston than we are from Auburn. And I'm just wondering if that's driven by the fact that we have better participation, participation, Lewiston than we do from Auburn, or?
Yeah.
Pull the mic.
So we traditionally, Lewiston's program, uh, and in their enrichment program in particular, you're talking about, was is much bigger than what Auburn, um, did. Because in Lewiston, we do have a staff that dedicates a good portion of their time getting those community education, enrichment learning, um, opportunities out there and and to the, to the public. Another thing is Lewiston also did mailing in both Lewiston and Auburn and some surrounding areas. So recently, if you've seen our brochure, you'll notice one side is Lewiston, you flip it over and the other side is Auburn. Um, the purpose of that was, we were able to kind of look at that, as me being the joint director, and say, if we go at this together, um, we kind of both reduce our costs. Uh, so so, you know, for Lewiston's side, it's a, it's a reduction of costs. For Auburn's side, it's an increase in exposure. So we're not, in Auburn, we only mailed our brochure to Auburn, but now we mail it to both Lewiston and Auburn because we share that. So we pay for the mailing in Auburn, Lewiston pays for the mailing in Lewiston, and it kind of becomes a win-win for that. Plus it reduced printing costs for us. Um, because one of the things about the brochure is is we had some stuff in there and you look at the brochure and it was duplicate. So we, we offer a college transitions program. That college transitions program is paid for a grant that both Lewiston, Auburn, and other adult eds in the area share. Um, we had a page in our brochure for that, Lewiston had a page in their brochure for that. So it's like, okay, we can consolidate that. So mainly what you see in our brochure now is the, those first pages when you turn into our enrichment programs. Um, we actually have, in the past two years, have done better in in Auburn with our enrichment as far as enrollment goes. We, we were kind of down in two thousand and seventeen, um, but we averaged since two thousand and fourteen, we average probably run about forty courses, we probably advertise about sixty. Um, and then we see just south of a hu- three hundred, uh, enrollments annually in that. Now, the big driver is obviously, you know, community participation, um, and people being interested in wanting to offer classes. One of the things that's also helped us do that is is our secretary, uh, has really taken on kind of some, some additional responsibility, leadership around it, and is the one that's doing a lot of the, hey, do you wanna teach a class? Uh, she, she takes, she goes to a lot of craft fairs and things like that and has kind of brought some of those to us. So we, we have kind of shifted somebody's workload because she was interested in it on trying to pull some of our enrichment ideas together. So, um, in Lewiston, his name is Mike, in in Auburn, it's Earlene. Three of us meet together and we talk about, okay, this is what we got for course offerings and kind of share that. And really it's about, um, the whole, the whole driver behind the community education piece is to to get non-school age people into our buildings, accessing those resources and those facilities, um, supporting lifelong learning, but keeping people engaged in what we're, we're doing in our schools. So i- it's, it's really, um, it's really about our communities. And it's a community of learners and and getting people to come in with good ideas and try it out and and offer a course. We have done other things in the past, like try to educate the community on, um, what's going on in the schools. Haven't had a ton of success with those things, uh, but, you know, always willing to say, hey, let's try that out. So when new initiatives were coming out, we were putting them in the brochure and advertising that, you know, there's a new, new system happening. Come, come and learn this. And actually Shelley, um, has taught some of those classes in the past. But, um, that brochure, I try to leverage it for not only our program, but also if there is something in the school departments that that needs to get out there, cause it gets out to both communities twice a year. So, I don't know if that answers questions or?
So I'm not super familiar with the adult ed program, so I apologize. But has there ever been any, um, sort of work put into trying to make the connection with the Auburn Senior Center? Um, I feel like maybe bringing courses to them, um, would increase, um, uh, participation?
Yeah. So yeah, there has, you know, and and it's kind of, I guess, everything is a cycle and and it comes around. So, you know, we haven't, but it's it's kind of good that you point that out because I, I was just talking to somebody, uh, recently about cell phone usage. And it was, it was, it was senior related, um, and, you know, there's, some of these cell phone companies don't give the best service and train you to use this stuff. So I think that, that, that's a good recommendation, it kind of brings it to the forefront of me. But we have, you know, looked at doing those things in the past, particularly doing stuff offsite, bringing them to people. And and it is, you know, it is about that. And that's one of my jobs to listen to what the community wants, um, for education needs. And and then looking at what we have from their school department and what we can, what we can do to match that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
This next slide just puts it all together so that you can see that, um, the budget is up two point nine million dollars, uh, overall. And so the last slide is kind of sharing, because I know we're gonna be tackling, you know, what are we going to bring, uh, forward to city council, to the community, uh, for support? So I wanted to show you, uh, if we were sticking with existing position salary and benefit increases, that's one point six million to, uh, That's 1.6 million to hold on to all the staffing we have right now for our programming. We have new positions in there, which is totaling 514,000. Our special ed tuition is up 773,000. Special ed seed is up 124,000. And remember with that, we moved from 82% attendance for students to 90%. Ryan's also preparing, what would it look like at 85%, 87% in case that's an area that you want to look at for reduction? So he is putting those numbers together when we get to that part of our deliberation in a couple of weeks. The, so those are the major drivers. You'll see there's a reduction of 110,740 of all other items. So when you look at savings, the budget has gone down in other items, but the major increases are the salary and benefits and new positions and special education costs. So that kind of sums up why we're up the 2.9 million.
So those new, the new positions also cover some of like what Billy was talking about. When you talk about the, you know, adding mechanic, that's in there as well?
Not the mechanic.
Mechanic is not included in that because that was a budget-neutral addition.
Oh.
It didn't raise the budget.
So what are those new positions then?
So go back to, yep, so go to the sheet. Go back again.
Most of them are the ones we've already gone over in the first.
So you'll see in cost center one, so if you go right back to the beginning, cost center one, we have, for new positions, we have an interventionist for Fairview, an interventionist for Park, interventionist for Sherwood Heights. We have one, two, three, four ed tech twos to help with class sizes 25 or higher. We have support for student support at Edward Little, Park Avenue, and Sherwood Heights. Those are positions that we're seeing a strong return on investment in other schools that have those. These people really help student plans for behavior. They're check-in people. They, they help support the teacher, the student. Then you'll see that there were grant-shifted positions. So those are considered in the maintenance of the budget, right? Because if we don't fund them, that would be a reduction in current staffing.
So you were talking about return on investment. One of the things that we had put up, someone had put up there was the PBIS and if that was a return on investment.
Correct.
And when you first did the cost centers and we first started this, you said you didn't do a slide for that, but that you would revisit it, but we haven't heard anything about it.
Right. So the PBIS cost is very minimal in the budget, to be hon, it, it, there isn't, I think the most probably PBIS is about $3,000 total because it's in the building budgets for celebration and supporting students. It's not a major part of the budget. So I can do that. It wouldn't, I don't know what you would cut relay to PBIS.
But isn't there someone that helps run the PBIS?
We have Jennifer Butterworth, who's a consultant, who's paid out of title grants. She's not paid out of the general fund. We have a BCBA position, which is Jillian Close. She is trained in helping support behavior plans, but we had her before we did positive behavior supports. She goes in when she's called, a school needs a plan, part of our return, response to intervention. So before special education would be considered. She is a return on investment because she often keeps students from going into the special ed pipeline by working with teachers and families around how can we help the behaviors so that the student is able to be successful? That's the position in here. But Jennifer Butterworth is paid out of title grants and out of special ed as well. Out of special ed grant funds. So her position is not in the general fund.
Thank you.
Yeah. But the ed tech threes, you know, and I know Andrew is here and I know Mike Davis is here. They certainly could share the benefits of those ed tech threes in the schools helping to support behaviors.
I believe it.
The, do you want them to come up and talk? Maybe at another time? Okay. Then you'll, the other, so those are the, really the major positions that are added. The other ones, if you go, keep going, we have staffing in cost center two, which is the autism program. So this, obviously, this is an investment. If you, if we fund those two ed tech two positions, we'll also be looking at tuition. So if you don't have those positions, we'd have to raise tuition. We did in the, if you keep turning the page, you'll see staffing changes for cost centers four through 11. Does everybody see that? So look at the top where it says changes in addition staffing. So some things here are football. So after, I did talk to Todd about football. So the rec would like us to, you know, this is one of those city things. It's either in the city budget, the rec's running football, or the school department is running football. So the cost to run football is $8, $8,900 because they need coaches, assistants. And then adding a lacrosse, boys and girls assistant coaches, that was $4,400. And I believe this was for the middle school. I know it says ELHS, but this was to add to the middle school programming. So that we have a feeder program going into our high school. We reduced the PBIS stipends. We had had that in the budget this year. And we really had a lot of discussion on this of whether we would stipend a person at each building to oversee it. And we are not doing that. The teams, there are PBIS teams that feel they can do the work as a team. It doesn't need to fall on one person. And so that, we did not support this coming year. You may look at that next year. Sherwood Heights, looking at additional secretarial support at Sherwood Heights. This position is also one that could possibly be shared with Park Avenue. They have a lot of needs with the, with the BI classrooms, you know. So when we talked about high priority, this has come up a lot of Sherwood Heights needing secretarial support, and so that's in there. And then the additional maintenance worker at 48. This is different than the mechanics. Remember, the mechanic one is not here because it's a wash, but this would be additional maintenance worker to help support all that needs to be done in the district. It would eventually save us, obviously, because some of the things we don't get done, you know. But these are the new positions. So taking these, the cost center two and cost center one positions, that's what's totaling the 514,000. So why don't we give you some work time till eight and then we'll break to go over some of the coronavirus stuff and, and get plans for the next meetings.
Here's, I have a question.
Just, this is the time to work. Ask questions.
Does the council or the manager give direction where they want us to be?
Not at this time. We expect to get direction on March 23rd. We go into a joint meeting on March 23rd. There has been a lot of discussion about our finance committee, which would be Dave, Brian, Adam, myself, and probably Jackie, would be meeting with Jill Eastman, the city manager, assistant city manager, to talk about both budgets, to see if we can't come to some collaborative budget ending up. So it doesn't become contentious on whose budget and how much taxes. So we've talked about that. We have not set our first date for that. I think it's a good idea to do that. And I think, you know, we, we, I've said this all along, we're going to need an increase in taxes. How much the community is willing to support in city council, we will see as we work through.
Just to let you know, the total budget costs are now at the very front of your notebook, if you want to see the totals.
Of your cost centers. But you can stretch, take a snack, write questions down. Staff is here if you have particular questions. And the mics are still on. It was this slide. You all may get snacks too. They're going to make a donation towards.
That's nice. That's great. Good. Perfect. Good. Nice.
Come on, ma.
That's great. No, you can't.
Because I need to go call her.
Oh, this is my book.
$10,000 more expensive two years ago. Why was it $1,000 more expensive for phones two years ago? We funded $15,000 for telephones, three-year prior actual. And then two-year prior actual was 25,000. Was it 50% more?
That probably could be a coding thing.
I was just telling you what.
You want to go over and look?
Yeah, I'll go over. Hold on.
I have, I need, I need to look up something.
Prior actual was 15.
Yeah, I can tell you on that.
Okay.
We used to receive E-rate funding for telephone reimbursement. And unfortunately, that went away last year.
But then I, what's this, this year? What we've spent so far?
That's what we spent so far.
Okay. So one-year actual is what we've spent so far?
Correct.
Okay.
I think we'll be back up in this range by the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, that was just, that was a really nice.
Nice. Yeah. That's like an ed tech two.
We do still get E-rate reimbursement on our dark fiber.
So what does that mean? What is E-rate reimbursement?
So E-rate is a federal program, obviously reimbursed, you know, for technology costs based on the free and reduced percentage. So we qualified for a lot. I think we were getting 70 or 80% reimbursement of our phone costs. That went away completely. Still get reimbursed for our dark fiber, which is in there. And then, as Peter mentioned, the category two project, which is for the network upgrade, that's also.
Okay.
So we will.
Which is that we pay 20 cents a dollar?
Yeah, so we said, what do we need to do and how can we take advantage of that? So that's where the network upgrade came from in the firewall upgrade that you'll see pieces of in the budget.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Oh, is Abby in town? Oh, she had her wisdom teeth out, right?
Yep, she's on, she's on.
Well, this is just, I was just wondering if that's.
It's spring break, but they actually.
Going back?
No, they turned her school to an online school. All the schools in Boston, I think, have been turned to online.
That's what some of our teachers do. They'll give bonus assignments for kids, like, because they can just log on to any computer, like for Google Classroom and access all the assignments. Her kids will love it because they're like fun little activities.
Is that like retail cost?
That's our cost.
Oh, yeah.
Basically take every meal we sell in those four schools all year, times the.
What is it? Camden, oh, yeah.
That's how much we're charging the parents or are we charging? But we're still charging, we're charging them more.
We're not making a profit on debt.
How much did we lose?
I just don't feel like it should be like. And, you know, I'm fortunate enough because my daughter goes to Washburn. Washburn, Sherwood Heights.
There's no title, there's no grants or anything like that that we can look at to help feed the kids or?
No, I'm just curious what it is. And because, okay, building by building, like they can qualify or not, but what is it by? Is our percentage? Because you would think that, like, it would average or, you know, taking into consideration the kids that are out of district. You know, 13.7% of our kids are out of district. Like, where is that coming from? Like, is that affecting our percentages to? Like, all of this other stuff, something that we should consider. Something that we should consider? Or we should try to get the information.
Adam, question. Add, um, like, especially the special education. Do they have a plan?
Not funding.
For example, if we decide that. It's happening in Maine.
Oh, you mean the two.
Those all of our schools hurt and underpaid.
I can ask money.
I get paid in hours, like, well, pseudo hours, like an average hour.
Range anywhere from the mid-thirties to a hundred thousand.
Expected to be made up.
I mean, and obviously, we don't know that specific future student would cost.
It's because they're.
Cause for example, if we didn't get those two positions, well, we would not be able to control that.
Correct. I mean, if we remove those, we probably have more in the budget.
That's what I'm wanting.
All right. So if they're not here, like, that means that we will have.
Well, I think the answer is between five and a hundred grand. Because we don't know.
Definitely more.
Definitely. We don't know those students, we don't know how much they cost. But we do know.
Well, we could ask Ryan, is Ryan still here? Yes. Yes. Ryan could, he could, has he, has he identified them?
Yes.
Has he identified those students? They not have yet.
What?
The ones for the ed tech two.
How many Title Grant employees do we have?
I mean, what?
How many Title Grant employees do we have? You said Butterworth?
You have several interventionists, I have a chart, I'll pull that up.
I have a permit. Our fault. So we're looking at about a set percentage.
Now, do you know, probably not off the top of your head, what the percentage of, um. Economic disbanding in the entire district? For about fifty-one percent. And so what do we have to be at for eighty percent? For like to get additional funding and all of those things? Like from Title One grant funding?
Title One is based on census. It won't change until the census.
This is the year.
It's not, people used to think, oh, well, we have more economic disbanding, we must be getting more Title One. No. It was based on the census, on it's, it's the city's popular level that drives Title One. Yeah. So we've had, we've had flat funding pretty much in the title. Well, that's why it's so important to build it all.
If for some reason we had to. I see his car is getting better. We can't look around.
Wait, is that where you can use the work there?
The other one, there wasn't one.
Where did Rodman Road, right?
I had to come up with a fact, I remember. There's a recognition, they never.
That's why I take care of it.
Very memorable face.
I remember the guy too.
I remember your daughter's cupcake.
What's her number, I'll keep her a call. Those cookies are good.
So, Pam, Pam, there's a halftime ed tech two at East Auburn. There's a halftime interventionist and a halftime interventionist for Park Avenue because it's two first grade teachers that team together. So half the day they teach first grade and half the day they're the interventionists. So their interventionist part is in title.
So are they like married schedules?
Yes.
And that's where?
That's at Park Avenue.
How successful is that?
There's a literacy coach at Park Avenue. Sherwood Heights Interventionist. Tara Knight, Literacy Coach Interventionist at Sherwood Heights. There's Walton Literacy Coach Interventionist. Walton Interventionist. Walton Interventionist. Washburn Coach Interventionist. And another interventionist at Washburn.
What's a coach interventionist?
So they have their job, they're coaching teachers and supporting teachers in effective practices in the classroom. So let's say their data showing that they're struggling in phonemic awareness and so forth. The coach would come in and help support, what are the lessons? They might do some model lessons. And then, the other part of their job is working with small groups. So as part of response to intervention, they're also working in small groups. So they help teachers and students.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we have about seven minutes.
Clock is wrong.
Oh, I'm looking, yeah, I know. That's what I was like, my watch is a. I'm looking at my computer. We have six minutes now.
I mean, have you identified that, you know, do you already know for these students? Or are you anticipating?
Unanticipated.
But you clearly have to mention.
You had some questions?
Yeah, I just, I was just curious if we didn't, if, you know, if we didn't find the positions, what repercussions we have, you know, roughly?
At minimum, fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
And then, per, per kid?
Yeah.
Um, per kid. That's a hundred, ten thousand. Yeah, that's per kid.
Yeah. We're done, we're done, aren't we?
So that's a pretty much a guarantee, because if you don't have, you have.
Yes, and that's with me. If they don't have daycare, it could be anywhere between eighty-seven thousand and over.
That'd be very bad if we cut that position. Well, that's what I, you know, we need to know, so.
Right, I know, yeah, that's why you're asking questions.
If you were to cut them and still deny, you would still end up paying, and you'd have to, you have no choice.
Right, their needs, if their needs present. I mean, and the other thing too is, depending, now, our industry typically have eight kids in there. So it's quite possible.
The cost of that is a little different.
And right now, it's an estimate. I certainly have four kids come in. Last year, I built the, I built the budget based on the four kids. And I had four kids that needed that level of support, no more. That's quite, it could possibly happen this year. It's possible, it could be more. So I could do the four, but then end up with six kids and still end up with two more tuition. But I just don't know.
Probably not less, I would gather.
I don't think you'll go less than four.
I think the need seems to be growing.
Yep, and I have those lists, and I, I'm actually doing some of my meetings on Friday with a local preschool. So I know.
Just so you know, yeah, just, it's good to know that, you know, you definitely, there's places you don't want to try, I guess.
At minimum fifty-five thousand, at most could be up to a hundred and ten per kid.
And that's per.
Okay, so it looks like everybody's wound up. There you go. All right, so with the COVID nineteen. Fancy term now. Switching gears, yeah, switch gears. Yeah. Money to crisis, as they say. So I sent you what I had sent out email to the staff this week so that you had information. We're trying to put information on our website as we learn it. I think I'm also gonna start tomorrow a Q and A. Questions that have come up. And then putting answers so that people, if they have a question, are you doing large gatherings? Right now, we are continuing with large gatherings, like the All-City Band is next week. So unless that changes, today, the governor said they were gonna continue with large gatherings in state because there has not been, at this point, a positive. Not to say that, you know, how many people are being tested and is everyone who might have symptoms being tested? You know, we don't know that. So we talked, Michelle and I were at our Western Maine Superintendent's meeting today, and people are holding to doing events. So that, that is gonna go forward unless tomorrow it changes, which is what's happening. Practically every hour, we're hearing some new information. Regarding field trips and so forth, we do have, which I was gonna notify you about coming up at our meeting, we have a school trip going to Quebec in April. Right now, Quebec has not been identified as an area not to be traveled. So what I have advised administrators that I know have trips coming up, and the other administrators will hear this tonight, is we're following the CDC's guidance on which states, countries are safe to travel and which are not. So right now, Quebec trip is gonna move forward. Another district also has a Quebec trip, and Quebec has not been classified not to travel. On the flip side, Massachusetts is one that they're being cautious about traveling to. So I know that Scott and near, the senior advisors, they do their senior trip to Six Flags in May. The last day before they get some penalty is May first. So they will be watching Massachusetts. They've already reached out to Six Flags, are their backup plans regarding trips. So we're watching those type of trips that are going out of state. And then, there's trips that are not sponsored by the school that happen over April break, and they're doing the same thing. They're working with their travel companies about which countries can they be going to. Costa Rica right now, there was another superintendent who, they have a trip to Costa Rica, and they're going to Costa Rica at this point. But Washington DC trips may not be going. So we're gonna have to work with staff, principals on where we're going this spring, if we're gonna go out of state. So those are the types of things we're working on. The other thing is, we had heard at first around trying to, if school was to close, how do you have learning continue? So we talked with our administrative teams on Tuesday to talk to their staff, what if? What if we closed and we wanted to continue learning? What are some possibilities? So we know we're one-to-one, seven through twelve, and majority of our teachers use Google Classroom. So there are ways that seven through twelve could do some continuing learning with their teachers through Google Docs. We're doing a survey, and I think this is good information regardless. They're doing a survey with their students on, do you have internet access at home? So that we know which students could, could work internet and which might need support. We've reached out to Verizon to meet with our representative there on what would it take to get those students, once we identify how many there are, hotspot access if we went in that direction. The middle school's also doing a survey as well. And then we talked at the elementary level, we do have enough iPads to shift them to go one-to-one, four, five, and six. But there's, you know, that's a challenge because they don't take iPads home. So if you suddenly do that, then it's gonna be, parents have to pick them up, and we'd have a whole protocol on that. And, and then what do we provide to kindergarten through third grade, pre-K? You know, what are those things so that we can consider counting that as a student day? So today, they, they brainstormed with the staff, what if? And so I have a document that's running right now. Our tech teams have been meeting about what could be good access for continuing learning using devices. So you think, well, you know, you could do that. But then you gotta think about other things. If you stay, if you do, if you say, we're going to count these as student days, because then you have special education students. So you have to provide specialized instruction. What does that look like? Can we meet that requirement? So there's, and then, yes, a teacher could be online with students and be instructing. How do we have ed techs also earning that time as well in their instruction? And then you talk about food service and, you know, so you, yeah, it's a, it's a big picture that you have to think of all the pieces. So you, you make a decision here, what's the ripple effect? If you make a decision over here, what's the ripple effect? So this morning, when superintendents were speaking in the region, everyone's doing, thinking about, what are we gonna do? There are other superintendents who are saying, we close, we close. We'll ask for a waiver. So, you know, thinking through, what is the pros on that? To say, okay, if we end up closing, we will ask for an emergency waiver, and they will count those as, you know, the students don't need to make up the days, because by law, they need to do a hundred and seventy-five days. And they would, they are, the DOE, which you saw in what I sent you, is saying they will grant waivers. Now, that seems, hmm, well, we could do that. Now, we don't have to worry about meeting the IEPs, we don't have to worry about having, you know, the laptops, the iPads, teachers having to, ongoing, getting materials out that kids can do at home. But then there's a flip side, is teachers need to do a hundred and seventy-five plus their workshop days for what they get paid. And you have your ed techs, and how are you going to support them in, you know, their earnings? Because their paychecks are built on a certain number of days. Then you have to think about food service. So if we're going to close, and we wanna make sure our students, that we were just talking about, how do we provide them lunches? We will have to talk to our food service staff about how would they open to allow families to come pick up food. We did hear late today that Maine has received a waiver to provide food that, right now, you have to eat the food on-site. They're waiving that for off-site. We did not know that this morning, we just heard that late this afternoon. So we'll be meeting with our food director that if we close, how do we provide food options? And then how do people pick them up and so forth? So see, there's all these logistics. This moment, I'm leaning towards, we're closed, we ask for the waiver, we work with, we work with our unions about how to have staff make up time, and how will that work? You don't think of these things, but childcare, I was talking to childcare director this afternoon, and if school's closed, childcare's closed. So she's already posted to her parents, if, if they close, you need to be thinking of alternatives. But she has workers that count on the hourly wage. So she's already talked to her staff about providing them with laptops. They all, they have to do trainings annually, so she would set up trainings, she would set up curriculum that they need to be building as part of their work, and how would they doc, how would they account for those hours? So everyone's thinking, we don't wanna hurt people if we have to close schools, so we gotta be working together. So earlier, I was leaning towards, and we were talking, administrators with teachers, towards continuous learning. But there's a lot of factors. Then I'm now leaning towards, no, we just close and ask for a waiver. Then there's somewhere in the middle where we could say, we're closed. We're not going to count these as student days, we'd ask for a waiver. But we also want to provide guidance to families who now have their children home for the next three weeks. And how do we support them in having books at home or activities at home? So that there are things that students are engaged in, but it's not going to count as a student day. See all this that we have to think about? So I don't know. I know some of you, working in your different places, things that you're considering and thinking about, what pops into your head as I say what these options are?
I work in Lewiston, so if I'm not working, I'm not getting paid, which means that I can't pay for my childcare because I'm still required to pay it even though my child's not there, which means that, like, I can't afford things like food and mortgage and all of those things. So my concern would just be the need to make sure that people, if we are closing, then those folks still need to be paid. And again, I liked what you said about working with the unions.
Absolutely.
Because that's something that's really important.
And we do have a labor management meeting on Monday, and that's going to be high on the agenda.
One of the questions I have is, so if we decide to close schools, and this has happened, I know in my own district, we've had to close a building, but teachers were still required to go to different buildings, or we still could work. Is that if school closed, so here's a question, maybe you don't know the answer yet. If school closed, is it doors are locked and no one is allowed in? Or is it that we can still, teachers, ed techs, that we always still have so much to do without students present?
I would say the answer is no. If you're closing, everybody's closing for a reason, which is we need to be distanced from each other somewhat. But they could do online work.
But in saying that too, because this whole thing, it's all about crowds right now. They're talking about crowds, you know. Everybody's panicking, buying too much toilet paper for God knows how many bums, but, you know. Thing is, we can't panic.
Right, exactly, right.
And I get that we're trying to, you know.
Be proactive.
Plan, proactive. But the biggest thing now too, and I've talked to someone from the CDC as well, and yes, Maine hasn't been hit yet. It probably will be, it's just coming. And we've only just gotten, been able to test in Maine this weekend. Before that, we had to send it down to Washington to be tested, so it took time. Now, that being said, I know my daughter goes to school in Boston, and they've gone online. And I think one of the reasons we've been able to stay kind of upfront of this is because Maine is very big, and we're not so densely populated. Whereas you have Massachusetts, you have all these other states that are very densely populated. So the biggest thing is the crowd control. But what you said, if we give the kids at home, then there's not going to be a big crowd. One teacher in one classroom is not going to pose a risk to another teacher in another classroom.
Like, kind of like, maybe just some really strict guideline, like.
We're going to have to follow CDC. If CDC says, that's what, we're going to have to follow their guidance. We're going to follow their guidance on closing. I mean, the reality is, and I agree with Pam, it's a panic. And I think there are certain, it is. It's going to take one report to have to consider closing. And that's the reality of it. Even if CDC says, well, maybe you don't need to, our community is going to be saying, how can I send my child knowing they may have just been exposed?
Real fear, because this is such a new virus.
Exactly.
None of us are immune to this. There's no vaccine. People are getting, you know, getting it, seems to be, they seem to be getting it a lot easier than the regular influenza. Yes, influenza kills more than, has killed more people than this virus, but we have antibodies towards the influenza. But when you talk about, you know, continue, I guess my thing is, we're talking about closing schools, but yet we're not talking about closing anything else, like, you know, activities or road trips. Yes, Quebec right now is not an issue, and not that I want to take that away from anybody. But you have to drive there. You're going to drive through states to get to Quebec that maybe, I mean, honestly, I don't know how to get to Quebec from here, but.
You only go through the state of Maine into Canada.
State of Maine.
Oh, really?
Oh, my God, yeah. I'm going, you know what I'm thinking?
And you're on a bus altogether. Yeah, you're in Connecticut, I know what you're saying. No, Pam, you're making a good point. We're not talking about closing, okay, I think what you're saying. We're following CDC. I'm trying to be proactive that I get a phone call tonight from CDC saying, you must close this school because we've had two reports. I'm trying to be as proactive as possible so everybody feels like we're on it. You're right, we haven't been directed to stop large events. We're not going to until we're directed to. We're not, you know, we're not closing schools. I mean, we talked about giving teachers time to do planning by next, on our workshop day next Friday. We're hoping to make it to next Friday without having to face. We're already getting phone calls, people concerned, and that's why we're following up on it. That's why I'm asking you, where are your, you know, I want your direction. I don't want to make the decision and not have you weigh in.
Other than the closing of the schools, which is the only option that we've heard tonight, what else is being done as a proactive move? Like, are we cleaning the facilities even more than we normally do?
Absolutely.
Are doorknobs being washed? Are, you know, like, things like that, you know, are we being effective at teaching kids to hand wash? Because I'm realizing through this epidemic here, that I think a lot of people didn't wash their hands. Because there is a shortage of sanitizer, there's a shortage of soap. Like, what did people do before this happened? Now, granted, I'm a germ freak, so my OCD is like on.
On overload. So that email that you received from me, that said everything we're doing. The poster that's hanging in the elevator in the city is the poster that is in every classroom. Posters went out, they're going in every classroom, every area, about the hand washing. So all the universal precautions, absolutely. We talked on Tuesday to make sure, especially at secondary level, to have hand washing moments. Oh, it's period two, remember, did everybody wash their hands today? You know, so making sure, elementary, they're used to that. Oh, we all go by the same, you know. But middle school and high school, making sure we are reminding students of hand washing and making sure they're doing that work. Sneezing and coughing into this, not shaking hands, but elbow, you know, all those things that were learned, good job, Dave. All the things.
Thanks, Dave.
I mean, so I'm only talking to, I want you to be clear. That's why I sent you out the notification that we're doing all of those things and more. The one thing that I need direction on, I don't have a problem with them continuing to move forward on what if we did continuing learning. Talking to teachers, the union about, okay, if we close and we don't have it count as a student day with a waiver, how are we going to have teachers be able to be working and ed techs working and those folks that are counting on their paychecks? Because we don't want to reduce paychecks, absolutely not. That's what I'm asking really, because obviously, we're doing all and more. And I, Adam, I don't know if you sent them out the pandemic flu.
Yes, I got that.
Yeah, so that is something that we put together when H1N1 came through. We have revised it to reflect what this is. Pretty much, a lot of it holds true with this.
It's not influenza.
It's not influenza, right, it's not, it's virus. But you follow the same thing, it's the same response, it would just be different. And so the city, Michelle's attending a city meeting tomorrow. There's LA meetings that are happening every Tuesday that Michelle will be attending. So we're all working on this together to make sure everyone is informed. So the big one hanging out there is, if we have to close for a month, what will be the expectation? Or we have to close for two weeks, what will be the expectation? I can make the decision with administrators and the teachers and all of that, and I just wanted your input too.
Would it be, and here's another thought, so would it be all or nothing? So could it be, we've had to shut down one building because of a confirmed case, but yet our other buildings are okay to go? Is that a possibility? Or is it, you know, a kindergartner at one building, I'm wondering.
It will depend who that kindergartner is attached to.
If they're a brother or sister, if they're in AMS.
And then their friends.
And their friends.
Yeah, it's going to be a spider web out. You know, we already see in other states that elementary, you know, that schools have closed in other states, depending.
What have they done?
Yeah, I was just saying, what have they done?
Yeah, well, I think they've done different things. I think they've either done the continuing learning, or they've gone for the waiver. So I think it varies, depending, you know. Yeah, I don't, yeah, it's so individualized.
That's the piece, and with CDC involved in it, they're dealing with, you know, large districts, small districts, large schools, small schools, one case, multiple cases. So everything is, as you know, in healthcare and in life, it's going to be so, there's going to be general responses that we can talk about, and then there's going to be the specific as the cases come through. And that's what we hear over and over and over.
What's the feedback from administration? Like, when you presented sort of this, you know, are they thinking?
Well, we really didn't talk about the option of being closed at that time. It was more, could we make this work? Right, could we make it work? Because we do have a lot of resources. You know, when you have resources, how can we use them to leverage this? We haven't debriefed about that. They were collecting it this afternoon, and so that's what we're working on. The high school was talking about, to the department heads to talk through. Google Classroom makes it a little more accessible, and so we can do that. It's going to be elementary, and, you know, folks will do what they're asked to do. That's what's awesome about this district. They want to jump in, they want to do what's right, they want to keep kids engaged. And so I think we can work it through. I mean, obviously, if something happens tomorrow, we're not prepared, we're going to have to be closed. But if we want to continue with preparation, which we can, because we could say, if we're out for two weeks, the first week, we're going to do continuous learning and then assess it and close, you know, so we could, we can be flexible.
Well, that's what I was going to ask.
Right.
Is this an all or nothing?
No, I don't think it is.
When we, you know, the high school kids have computers, not worried about as much of them as we are the elementary kids. So if we said, okay, it's an act of God, we have to close the schools. High school, you'll continue on, everybody that can with the computers. Teachers will continue to work from wherever they're at, whether it be the school or from their homes, giving the kids their homework and what they need to do. And as it filters down, you get to the kids that don't have computers, or you get to the people that don't have internet, then you, we make accommodations for those and ask for the waiver for those students that don't have it.
What kids, high school kids, families don't have access to the internet?
That's what we're collecting right now. Yeah, we're doing the survey for that, yes. I will ask that question, because it's a good one, right? I know that in order to count a school day, you have to have at least 50% of your students attending. So we're going to watch that. We also want, to add to the things that we're doing, Pam, is we're doing attendance monitoring. So the secretary, the principals are working the secretaries, if they're hearing their student out or there's flu, they're following up with a phone call. So, you know, what are the symptoms? Have you gone to your PCP? So we're trying to also monitor what's going on, because they set, right now, it's at 15%. If you go below 15%, you automatically have to discuss with CDC what you're going to do. H1N, we came about this close to having to close the school, and then we spiked back up again. But we were, we had to every day report our attendance to the CDC. But we are not there yet.
What about kids that, I don't know, like, I'm thinking of my daughter, because that was one of the things that they brought up at the school, was kids that have gone abroad or kids that have gone on vacation and coming back. Like, we don't know that they, like, if they went to Massachusetts, they went to spend a week in Boston.
Right, exactly.
You know, they could come back and be a carrier, and we don't know. Like, are they self-quarantining? Are they, like, are we looking into that, or?
We have not gotten direction to monitor that.
Same with my hospital, like, if we go out of state.
Right.
If I go out of state, like, I'm going to have to go pick up my daughter's things. I cannot go back to the hospital without going to employee health. Like, I have to wear a mask until I can go see employee health, and then I'm checked out to make sure that I'm not having any symptoms, I don't have a fever, so that I'm not a risk to anybody else. So I was wondering if there's anything like that.
They haven't given any direction on that. That doesn't mean that that's not coming. We haven't done that. Like, April vacation, we make it to April vacation, and people going here, going there, although I know people are probably shifting their travel plans. But you're right, people this weekend could be going to places, and we're not aware of it. But no, we haven't.
It doesn't have to be Italy. Well, not that anybody can go to Italy anymore, but.
No, but it could be you're visiting people who went.
New Hampshire could be, you know.
Well, you could be with a family that just traveled.
Yeah. I think at this point, I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to say personally, keep us well, keep us as a school committee really well-informed. But ultimately, I think this is what is best for the Auburn School Department based on the people that are involved in the day-to-day doings of the Auburn School Department. I mean, that's sort of the feeling that I'm getting. Let us, you know, make sure we have kids who have access, don't have access. You know, whatever SOPs you would have to come up with.
Right, oh, yeah.
For if you're bringing an iPad home, not bringing an iPad home. Is it that every, you know, everyone K to 2 goes home with tons of books and activities and things like that? Like, to me, that is left up to, you know.
I like that idea, because the smaller kids, it's not so much the technology. The older kids may need it more, because they rely on it, and they do a lot through it. And I like what you said about contacting Verizon to see if they can provide hotspots for these children who don't have access, so that we can, you know, continue to educate them. Teachers can work from home. And that way, they're still getting paid, or, but I don't know about, like, ed techs.
Well, our ed techs can, they have laptops, so we, they do. They have laptops, so there are things they could be doing. We tried to think outside the box. But I think we, like you said, Karen, what we can do is, we know they've done work today. We're meeting with the union on Monday. There'll be more work next Wednesday. So when I come back to school committee on Wednesday, I'll give you more updates as well.
So just a couple of things. One, is there anticipation? Historically, we've worked with Lewiston School Department for snow days. I assume.
Oh, you mean, are we going to be on the same page? It's going to depend on.
So if Lewiston closes, likely we'll close.
We'll probably have to wait and see what CDC.
See what the, okay, and then.
They are looking at doing what we're thinking, what we're looking at as well. They're calling it analog or digital. So analog students will get this, digital students will get this.
And if it's counted as a student day because of a waiver, then I, personally, I don't think it should be different as if staff were there or not. Like, I think at that point, and I guess maybe this is more the union side of my hat, is that if it counts as a student day, staff should get paid like it was a student day.
And that's.
I guess that's my point.
I think we're going to have to get advice on that.
Yep, sure.
But.
Money's on the budget.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
I hear what you're saying.
Part of one of my questions, in your contracts, and I haven't seen any of the contracts. Do you have act of God in the contracts?
Act of God?
I think it's stuff down south.
We do not.
The Mississippi, the river floods, your town's wiped out.
Well, right, what we do have is a commitment for workdays. So we will probably get advice on if it's a student day, should it be, also count as a teacher day? That's all coming, and we're just going to have to work it through. When we faced this before, when we had a lot of snow days, like, before we put eight snow days in the calendar, we had five. And when we were reaching, I think it was like seven, we gave up the March workshop day, and then we did two hours, we worked with our union. We did two hours every Wednesday, and for every five that we did, we got a day back, okay? So there are things that staff, we may be able to work with staff, what could be offered? What could we do to help support them? We're open to all kinds of different ideas.
I don't mean to add to your problems, but I like the idea that what we were talking about with food services.
Exactly.
But if they close the schools, don't they close food services also?
Well, I think what they're going to say is, you can open your kitchens. We'll have to talk about staffing for that, absolutely, right? Well, that's what I said too, okay, we're not in, but we're cooking food.
Bring in the students to eat.
Well, we were all, and there's been a lot of contradictions, right? We have to push for attendance because they score us on our chronically absentee, but now I'm telling them, please stay home if you're not feeling well. So, I mean, it's like.
That's the same with everything. The CDC says, stay home, you know, you're sick. But first of all, in this country, people are struggling. No one has sick time.
Right.
So it's a huge crisis on so many boards. So it's a huge crisis on so many boards. But it's a huge crisis for a lot of people right now.
You know, but, you know, they hit you for attendance, but they really shouldn't be attending.
When did the surveys get distributed?
Scott, did, what?
My hope is that we can get them tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
The reality is, if the CDC informs you to close the schools this week, those surveys...
Well, we're not prepared to do continual learning starting tomorrow anyway.
My feeling on this is that the decision that you need to make minimizes the damage to teachers and kids.
Yeah.
The other concern that, I don't know if we've brought it up, is if it's an extended school closure, these kids, what's this going to do for them? They're graduating.
Right.
I just don't think, I think the irresponsible is to push them through. That needs to be part of the...
The conversation should include that, absolutely.
I anticipate this will probably happen this week, from my conversations at the state.
Right, well, and, you know, graduations are already being canceled at universities.
It's like it's an extended period of time.
Oh, I hear you. I think you're right, though, we're doing, they made the survey, the survey's going to go out tomorrow.
I mean, a good survey result is, what, 30%?
No, no, all students will be, they're taking it at the same time.
I see the students...
Oh, yeah, the students are doing, not the parents.
Students are good at surveys.
Exactly. Matter of fact, they're doing the survey in a way that they're tracking all students. So if 10 have an answer to the survey, they will be told, we need you to take the survey.
What about, so let's say we miss three weeks of school throughout all this.
Right.
Has there been talk about making those three weeks up? I know it would take away from summer, but...
Talk to the union.
That's a union, that's parents, that's students.
But doesn't that go along with the 175 days?
Oh, yeah, you could tack on all the days.
No, that's not going to make me the...
No.
No, it wouldn't, but that's okay.
Sorry, I know.
Oh, no, well, I think one school department was saying, you know, maybe if we're able to do a summer school, maybe teachers could do summer school stuff. But I think, you know, everyone, that's lives that get interrupted all the way around. So I think maybe doing a hybrid of some sort, how can we do continuing learning to make up some of the time, and then how much can we waive? And like you said, Dave, we don't want kids not learning for a month, that's not helpful. So I think there's a lot...
Congregate other places, though. They're not going to stay quarantined to their own homes.
They aren't going to just stay home.
Right, it's going to be...
That's what's going to... Well, I've got 12 boys in my house.
Right, exactly. Right, right.
The state's sort of taking this as, we'll see it as it happens, or are they trying to be proactive?
I just got an email from my boss that we have to work from home.
All right, so you've already been notified. I think it's just now?
I think, I mean, I mean, look at it, it's not a, it's not a, I'm glad we're being proactive, because I don't think it's an if, it's when.
It's a...
I mean, they've already, you look at March Madness, all the March Madness games are being held with no fans. The NBA is talking about, I mean, these are just sporting events, colleges are going online. I mean, it's, like you said, it's going to be one case, and that's all it's going to take.
Right. So we're trying to be as proactive as we can?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's great.
As fast as we can.
I agree with Dave about minimizing the impact.
Yes.
My concern about continual learning is, I think it's great from high school, maybe from a middle school, elementary school, I think it's a terrible idea. And I'll tell you why. I think it's, we already have trouble with getting parents engaged. You're going to have some parents who would be great to sit with their students or sit with their kids and work through stuff, and then you're going to have the ones that are not so fortunate, unfortunately. And I think continual learning at that level is just hard, because you're depending on parents to really help them stay engaged. Yeah, I just think that's going to be the biggest trick.
I 100% agree with that, that I think seven through 12, as far as continual learning, is the best, because there's already options, there's already a framework in place to do that work, and maybe at a voluntary for the teachers in the elementary level, they can decide what it is. But as far as, like, work to make sure kids are going to be able to get what they need to graduate is more important in the upper grades than it is in the lower grades.
Well, yeah, my feeling though, the only pushback I would say is, you have, I would want to offer it at elementary, if a student doesn't engage in it, we, if they weren't, okay, if you didn't have anything, no one's engaging, right? So I, that's my feeling, is, I'm with you, Brian, that kids shouldn't be penalized if stuff doesn't get done, but I think, you know, sending books home to read or doing math, I think kids like to play school at home, but you're right, there'll be kids that don't, and those, you know, kids don't do homework either. So, but I think having those options, so it sounds like, let's keep moving towards continuous learning as quickly as we can, because we said, I don't think we can wait till next Friday. We've got to have a plan before. You said, Dave, you just got told work from home. I think that's what's coming, and I just appreciate this conversation. It really helps me think of things we haven't thought of, and we will keep working.
Also think about the gatherings. I hate to say that, because I know...
I mean, you all can tell me you don't want...
Zoom, right?
Well, no, I mean, like, the gatherings, well, granted, thank goodness, basketball's done.
What do we have for big gatherings coming up?
Do we have anything?
Community gatherings, all-city are, we're hearing about pep rally, but then you, I don't think canceling pep rally went...
We have confirmed cases right now.
Right, and they go to lunch in the cafeteria together, so kids are together in the building. I don't see why a pep rally would be canceled. If you don't want to have community events, like the all-city band, we don't need to